Well, good morning. I'll officially call to order the regular meeting of the Coachella Valley Water District Board of Directors here in Palm Desert. Today is October 8th, 2024. And would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Prior to roll call, I'd like to make clear for the record that this meeting of this meeting should be reflected in the minutes that this, at least a portion of this board meeting is conducted pursuant to California Government Code Section 54953, in that Director Aguilar is in Koloa. Hi, Director Aguilar. Anyways, Hawaii. And we'll be participating by speakerphone in accordance with the Ralph M. Brown Act. The teleconference location has been identified on the agenda for this meeting. Clerk Bemidze, will you please call the roll?
Yes, good morning, President Powell.
Here.
Vice President Estrada.
Here.
Director Bianca will be absent for this meeting. Director Aguilar?
Here.
Director Nelson?
Here.
Thank you.
Great. Director Aguilar, can you hear me well?
I can't, John.
Were you able to hear our proceedings on this end up till now?
Yes.
Do you have a copy of the agenda for this meeting?
I do.
Boy, it sounds like you're in the room. It's really good audio. Have you posted the agenda at the location where you are?
I have.
Is your location reasonably accessible to the public such that any member of the public could participate in this teleconference from your location if he or she wished to do so?
It is.
Okay, good. Is there any member of the public there with you? Is it?
Not at the moment.
Not at the moment? All right, well, let us know if someone shows up. And so we'll make sure that all votes for this meeting are
I will.
taken by roll call. Great. Let's see then, we're gonna move on to additions, deletions, and adjustments for the agenda, and we do have an addition to closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2. Staff determined a need to add conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation. Initiation of litigation pursuant to Paragraph 4 subdivision D of Section 54956.9. One potential case, this came, this item came to staff's attention after the posting of the agenda and outside of the period allowed to amend the agenda. So do I have a motion from the board to add this item to the closed session?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and roll call vote, please.
Sure. President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Yes.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you. Four oh.
Thank you. So with that, that passed, and that item is now added to the closed session agenda. Are there any other changes?
No, sir.
That we know of? No. Is there anybody wishing to make public comment at this time?
Does not appear so, sir.
No. Let's see then, we're on to the consent calendar. Items 5A, B, and C. I wanted to pull 5B just to add a couple of questions. Is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent calendar?
Yeah, I'll move the balance of the consent calendar.
Second.
A second. A roll call vote, please.
President Powell?
Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Yes.
Director Aguilar?
Yes.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, so 5B.
Hi.
I know it's for cutting, precise cutting. I just don't know how we're gonna use it, and I didn't see, I'm curious more than anything else. What is this for?
So I'll just set the stage, and then I'll turn it over to my weld and crew chief, Robert Taylor. They've actually been asking for this for probably five years, and it finally, I finally agreed to put it in the budget. I think it's really important with some of the sophisticated welding that they do at this point in time. They work on a lot of our different systems, and then the ability to actually do 3D and cut to that 3D to like two one thousandths of an inch is just, you know, it's worth its weight in gold, but with that, I guess.
Yeah, I guess what, so what items are we cutting?
Sure.
What purpose does it serve?
Sure.
Good morning, President Powell. Good morning, members of the board. So with this machine, it's, it really streamlines a lot of the stuff that we do as far as cutting abilities and the speed of it, and loss of material. So basically, one of the instances I can relate to is if we are cutting, for example, some of these modified flanges that are four bolt hold flanges, we come out of one inch steel, and it usually takes probably my best guy maybe four or five hours per one to do, whereas this can do it in about five minutes or less.
Whoa.
So it's, it's much more precise, it's much faster, and less material waste.
So these are custom parts that you can't buy off of the, off the shelf?
All those are discontinued.
Discontinued? Interesting. Okay. So, so connections and flanges and things?
Yes, yes.
Connectors?
Much more than just that, too.
More than that?
Yeah. A lot of the stuff that we do for irrigation as well, like locking devices and stuff like that, we can throw a five by ten sheet of material on there, and what would take a full day to cut all these things would take a matter of minutes. So it can really streamline a lot of the stuff that we do.
Maybe we should have a tour once we get the thing up and running so the board can go down and see for themselves how effective it is.
Absolutely.
Yeah, okay. All right, fair enough. Thank you.
I'd move approval of the plasma cutter.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Roll call vote, please. Aye.
Vice President Estrada?
Aye.
Director Aguilar?
Aye.
And Director Nelson?
Aye.
Thank you. Four oh.
Thanks. Yeah, good luck with that. I do want to see it. 7A, so we're into the action calendar. This is the resolution for the DCP, and Robert, I believe you have a presentation.
Sure. Good morning. It's been a few years since I've stood in front of this board to talk about the Delta Conveyance Project, and like to take this opportunity to do a few things today. I think one is to kind of give you an update of what's been going on since, you know, the last request, I think was back in '22, and then also perhaps ask the board to consider a few actions, which I'll list here. I think one of the more substantive goals that we achieved last year, and you'll hear a little bit more about it from one of our guests today, is the completion of the California Environmental Quality Act, the final EIR, which was published, I think it was last December. And as a responsible party, this organization will need to make findings of SEQA and then SEQA guidelines, and then adopt the SEQA findings as a fact, and also adopt a statement of overriding considerations under SEQA. So that's the administrative part, you know, to proceed with this project. And then more substantively, the board also needs to consider authorizing funding of CBWD share currently at 3.78% of the project for the pre-construction work that's going to continue into '26 and '27, not to exceed $11,000, $11,340,000. And really kind of cut to the chase, staff has done analysis on this cost impact to the state water project fund, and has determined that there will be no impacts, you know, based on our current rates. So with that, I'd like to turn the floor over to two of our guests that we have. Carrie Buckman from, and she is the primary environmental lead for Department of Water Resources on this project, and then Graham Bradner, who's the executive director of the Design Construction Authority, who's been supporting DWR and us on these efforts.
Yeah, thank you, and welcome. Yeah, I look forward to hearing. I guess, just sort of tee up what are, what my interest in this is, it seems like a necessary project, but what happens to the project? I think we're much smaller than two of the larger, like you have Matt as number one, and I think Kern is number two. And what happens if they aren't supporting it? And I'm just curious, since I don't think they've taken this action yet. So if you could include that in there of what happens to the project if they're not supportive?
No, great question, President Powell. And I think we are among one of the earlier agencies to go. I think up to now, I think there's been maybe four or five that have gone, but you know, you're right, most of them have been a little smaller. I think the larger one, you know, who went last week was Santa Clarita Water, Santa Clarita Valley Water Agency, and I think they're a little less than 3% of the project. So what happens to the project if Kern and Metropolitan, you know, just put names on these two larger agencies don't go? Well, they fund, they're probably about, you know, 65% of the project, and if they're not in, it's a gap way too big to be filled, and I think we have, quite simply, we don't have a project. But as you stated, I think, you know, all of us feel this is a necessary part to stop the, or to boost up the reliability of the project, you know, for future years, and I know Metropolitan is working and engaging very hard on discussions internally, so.
Right. Okay.
It's probably not a satisfying answer, I'm sure.
No, but you see, that's my point of view on it anyway, so you know maybe how to
Thank you.
characterize your presentation. Thank you.
Thank you for having us, President Powell and members of the board. We're really happy to be here and talk more about Delta Conveyance. I'm gonna start a little bit with sort of emphasizing again the importance of the project, why we as the state think this is so critical, and we're moving this forward, and a little bit of the status of planning and permitting, which is sort of my end of the arena, and then Graham will come talk more about the cost estimate and the benefit costs. So really, the, the large reason that we're looking at this project is because we know we need to prepare for climate change. We've been seeing some of the things, you know, we've been planning for climate change for quite some time, but really, we've been starting to see some of these trends in the past few years. While we know that the amount of runoff could be highly variable, it could decrease up to 32% or increase to 47% depending on different models, but there are trends that are true across that wide variety. We expect to see more precipitation falling as rain instead of snow, more extreme drought and flood cycles, and more intense precipitation events scattered within dry stretches, and we've seen some of those. So, you know, in the past few years, we had two incredibly dry years followed by an incredibly wet year. Also, if people remember in the fall of 2021, the year, water year 2122 was a critically dry year, but in October, we had a very large rain event. We had over five inches of rain in Sacramento and set records, and in December, we also had a really large rain event between Christmas and New Year's. And being able to capture those kinds of events is critical to being able to manage water within this changing climate. So as water, as the climate changes, we are less able to manage that system with the water management tools that we have. With less snowpack and more rain, we need to be able to capture the water when it's available, and at times where currently our system is constrained by environmental regulations in the South Delta. So we can't currently capture that water as well in reservoirs because of flood control restrictions, and in the Delta because of environmental restrictions. So having an additional facility to be able to capture water when it's available and move it is critical to being able to manage under this changing condition. So the state water project is an incredibly important piece of infrastructure, not just to those who rely on it, but really broader than that. The service area is 27 million people, and I think we hear a lot about the statistic that if, if California was its own nation, it would be the fifth largest economy in the world. If the state water project's service area was its own economy, it would be the eighth largest in the world. So this is, this project is not just, not just directly supporting those who, who get the drinking water, but it really is supporting an economy that is extending beyond the borders. The current water supply is about 2.5 million acre feet per year on average of deliveries to urban and agricultural customers, but we know that that's going to change in the future, that climate change will decrease that yield, climate change and sea level rise by about 22% by 2070. Additionally, if there is a seismic event in the Delta and there is damage to the Delta levees, the water would move up into the Delta, the seawater, and we would have an extended outage of the Delta Conveyance, or of the existing conveyance, the bank's facility that could extend up to almost a year with really degraded water quality for another year. Having an additional point of diversion would help with that issue. So this looks at the, the issue that we're facing regarding climate change. If we do nothing for the state water project, we look at a decrease of about 22%, so from about 2.5 million acre feet to under 2 million acre feet by 2070. And that is because of the combined forces of climate change, which is moving the precipitation to a different time of year, as well as sea level rise, which means that there is more water needed to move out through the Delta to maintain salinity in the Delta. So with the Delta Conveyance Project, we are able to restore about 400,000 acre feet of supply to the state, to the state water project. This is incredibly important facing the, when we face these climate change conditions. So this here is a really interesting example of how it would have helped. I think you probably have heard about the steelhead issues in the South Delta this year. This year, there were steelhead that were collecting near the South Delta facilities, and we experienced more regulation of our South Delta pumping plant than we have in recent years, quite a bit more. They just overlapped in a way that, that was unusual. And if we had had a different place to divert the water, where we weren't facing the same kind of steelhead conditions, we would have been able to divert 941,000 acre feet of water, which is about enough water for over 9.8 million people or nearly 3.3 million households. The points that we're looking at in the North Delta do not have the same fishery restrictions in the South Delta because they are an on-river system, so it functions differently, it's in a different place in the Delta, so they have different kinds of requirements. So just a little bit about where we are in the planning and permitting. As Robert mentioned, we did, we, we did reach a major milestone at the end of 2023 where we finalized the environmental impact report and decided to move forward with the project with the Bethany alternative. The Corps of Engineers is the lead on the final environmental impact statement, which we're expecting later this year. So we've moved into these other environmental permitting processes that are expected to extend through the end of 2026. I'm not sure if everyone was at Aqua this year, but you might have heard the governor, and, and one of the key things that he emphasized is the importance to him of this project and his commitment to completing the permitting by the end of his term at the end of 2026. This is a commitment that I feel very, very directly, I'll say. So it's, it's really a strong commitment on his part. So we are working now to complete Endangered Species Act consultation and California Endangered Species Act consultation this year. We have started our water rates process, and the hearing is expected to start in January, and then Delta Plan Consistency is on track to start later in 2025. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Graham to talk a little bit about the project itself and the cost estimate.
Great. Good morning. So as Carrie described, the Department of Water Resources finalized the environmental impact report and selected the Bethany Reservoir Alignment as the project for further study and advancement. And so the DCA has been working on an updated cost estimate for that project, the main purpose being to feed the statewide feasibility analysis, which I will touch on a little bit later in the presentation. And so I'm gonna talk first about the cost estimate work, the update that we've been performing, and then talk a bit about some of the innovations work we're doing. So there's the, the project described in the EIR, which is a relatively conservative concept, and then we've been starting to further evaluate potential refinements and innovations to help manage costs, and that's really a large part of what we want to be doing going forward between now and the completion of those remaining permit activities. So the Bethany Reservoir Alignment, it's the 6,000 cubic foot per second project. I'd characterize the overall design level at this point as about a 10% overall design. Includes two intakes on the main stem of the Sacramento River in the North Delta, 45 miles of 36-foot internal diameter tunnel that would connect those intakes in the north down to a new pumping plant in the South Delta. This would be a new pumping plant that adds redundancy to the existing state water project facilities, so this pumping plant would be dedicated to lifting that water out of the tunnel and delivering it directly to Bethany Reservoir. Bethany Reservoir is essentially a wide spot in the California aqueduct, that's where the existing bank's pumping plant discharges to. Also, the South Bay Pumping Plant, which feeds the portions of the Bay Area, takes water out of Bethany Reservoir. So that's a real important sort of meeting spot for all the water within the state water project, and the, the new discharge structure would connect directly there and, and move that water from the North Delta intakes into Bethany Reservoir. The estimate is a bottoms-up estimate principally, although we did multiple approaches and reconciliations through the estimating process, but the main estimate is a bottoms-up deterministic estimate, thinking about all the activities that would be required for the project, the equipment, duration, labor, building up that number as opposed to what would traditionally be done typically at this stage of a project, kind of working top-down, just looking at like benchmarking, sort of what typically does percentage does this represent of an overall estimate, et cetera. We did that as well as a way to double-check our work, but the main estimate is bottoms-up. It's a, in 2023, real dollars, these are undiscounted dollars, meaning they do not account for the time value of money, but that is accounted for in the benefit cost analysis. So the economic feasibility work does account for all of those time impacts, but the, the base estimate itself is $2023. It's a class four estimate, there are some class five aspects in terms of, of the status of our understanding, and that's mainly along the tunnel alignment. We do have some pretty significant gaps along that, that eastern Bethany alignment, and that, that also is, is an area of focus for the next few years. We'd like to be doing additional geotac investigations to better characterize the conditions over there and help us refine the design assumptions, and again, kind of working towards that, the innovations topic, teeing up the best possible project once the permits are complete. And then lastly, we've assumed a design bid-build procurement process for this estimate. We needed to develop a sequence and schedule for this entire estimate, and so the design bid-build procurement is the most conservative from a schedule and cost perspective. So here's our updated estimate, just jumping right to it, down at the bottom of the table on the right, it's $20.12 billion in $2023. You can see the breakdown above, the total construction cost is about 75% of that estimate, the, what we call other program costs, which includes the soft cost labor, land acquisition. I want to point out, we've got just under $1 billion of environmental mitigation included in the estimate in this other program cost category. We've also got $200 million of community benefits included in the cost estimate. So all of these are already plugged into that $20.12 billion. I mentioned reconciliations were completed in the development, development of this estimate. First, you know, we're, I'm reflecting the bottoms-up costs on the right-hand side of the table, we actually did a top-down estimate as well, and then went through a formal reconciliation process to resolve any discrepancies. We also reconciled this estimate with our master program schedule where we've cost-loaded everything just to make sure, again, we've double-checked and triple-checked our numbers to make sure that things are lining up. And then lastly, we compared it back to the 2020 cost assessment, which was for a bit of a, you know, different project, but we went through the work of making it as close to apples-to-apples as we could, and I'll show you that on the next slide. Included in the estimate, in addition to the items I pointed out, we have close to $500 million in direct risk treatment cost or risk mitigation costs. Those are included directly in the total construction costs already shown on the right-hand side, so they're, they're essentially buried in those numbers. We've got a total construction contingency of 30% included in the estimate, and then down in the other program cost category, it's mainly 15 to 30%. Only 0% applies to the community benefits program and a couple of other fixed items, but in general, between 15 and 30% within the other program costs. So here's our comparison to the 2020 cost assessment. The $20.12 billion is inside the, you know, the first column, inside the gold box. Then as you look at the second column, that's the 2020 assessment, 15.9 billion totaled at the bottom. This was for a different alignment, but as I said, we went through the, the work of trying to, to make this an apples-to-apples reasonable comparison. We took that 15.9 billion and escalated it according to the Bureau of Reclamation's construction cost trend data, which shows inflation of 26.8% from 2020 to 2023. So just taking that 15.9 billion, escalating it across, using that index, we end up at $20.17 billion, a very close number to where we, we ended up with our bottoms-up estimate. To me, this speaks to the quality of the work done back in 2020, you know, although there was a lot of unknowns at that time, there was a higher contingency and several other placeholders included. Now we have a more detailed and robust estimate, but, and a refinement of that contingency, but we're still landing in a very similar place. So to me, I think this speaks to the confidence that I have in the work that, that's been performed to develop these costs. So now I'll shift gears to the cost savings innovations. These are potential innovations to reduce cost impacts or improve constructability. They're really focused on validating design assumptions associated with the concept design and the EIR, collecting and incorporating new geotechnical data to help us refine those assumptions and test some of those conservative assumptions built into the analysis, but also leave room for industry innovation. We still have a few years before we would be approaching construction, there's a lot of opportunity to innovate underground construction, especially tunnels and large infrastructure is a constantly innovating industry, and we want to make sure that we're staying on top of that, providing room for that, and also allowing for that in, in the understanding and description of the project. But to be clear, the innovations that we're analyzing now do not represent changes to the project description. DWR will have to, to consider any potential refinements and, and overlay the permit requirements as we move forward. An example on the right-hand side is, is the new pumping plant, the Bethany Reservoir Pumping Plant. It's largely a below-ground facility, you see the, the flat top, that's the ground surface with the gantry cranes and, and the awning structure. The rest of that is all below ground, it's a tremendous amount of diaphragm wall box structures connecting the tunnel to the pumping plant. That's an interior wet well in the middle and then straddled by the pump bay, so all of that is inside these deep box structures. And so what we've been looking at is potentially replacing those diaphragm wall structures with a tunnel extension from the reception shaft, and so that's the pipe that you see on the lower image, that's, that's entering into the middle of the pumping plant, and then replacing the rectangular box pump base with a series of interlocking shafts. It's much more efficient construction, we save a tremendous amount of construction material quantities as well as schedule. This particular example is about $140 million just in quantity reductions, not accounting for the potential schedule and risk benefits, so this is just one example. We're looking at 19 different innovations at the moment, continuing to refine and expand on those. Those 19 early innovations, right now, we see potential reductions of about 6% of the total cost, or one and a quarter billion, take this estimate down from 20.1 to 18.9. And that's early-stage analysis, this is the type of work that we really think we can continue to refine the project and, and bring forward, you know, as best we can, a better project for full consideration at the time of implementation. So I mentioned the benefit cost analysis, this was performed by Berkeley Research Group. The cost side of the analysis is first the, the updated construction cost estimate that, that we just reviewed. In addition, an estimate of operations and maintenance cost was added to the cost side of the ledger, and then the unmitigated environmental impacts. So the, the mitigation is included in the estimate itself, so that's in the first bullet, but there's the unmitigated environmental impacts, which the economics team also assigned a cost to and included in the analysis, so a pretty conservative approach. On the benefit side, it's largely the water supply reliability that you heard Carrie describe in terms of the, the ongoing mitigating the, the negative impacts of climate change on those water supply benefits, also to a smaller degree, water quality. And then there's the seismic benefits, there's a pretty detailed analysis of this in the benefit cost analysis, but although it's a very large and expensive event, if it were to occur, the relatively low probability of a large seismic event helps to keep that from dominating the analysis. It's really the water supply benefits that is the principal benefit in, in the, in the computations. So the analysis by the economics team found that the benefit cost ratio is 2.2, so for every dollar spent on the project, a benefit of 2.2 would be returned, so, you know, it readily passes the benefit cost test, typically something over one would, would be a starting point, you'd like to see something north of 1.5, but 2.2 provides pretty significant buffer for, for continued understanding and, and sort of evolution of this process. We have a lot of information available to the public, this is where, through these QR codes, both the benefit cost analysis report as well as the cost estimate report are, are both available to the public. There's a lot of information that we have out there, and transparency is a real priority for us through this process, so all that information is available, and I, I think with that, we would welcome any questions.
Okay, thank you.
So we decided to provide the, the background update first, and then I'll bring it and close out the rest of the discussion, if that's okay. So, um, we decided to provide the, the background update first, and then I'll bring it and, and close out the rest of the discussion, uh, if that's okay. Um, so, you know, so, some of the slides, uh, hopefully are a bit rhetorical, but, uh, just wanted to, um, make sure that we're on the same page in terms of like looking at statistics, uh, of the importance of the state water project, you know, to this valley. So, uh, the state water project, uh, CVWD became one of the original signers, uh, to this back in 1963. And over time, we've grown our, uh, Table A allocation, our contracted amount from a little bit over 23,000 to what it is currently today, 138,350. And then plus another 9,500 with, uh, Rosedale Rio Bravo. So that brings a total up to a little bit over 147,000 acre feet. Uh, we've invested, uh, as an agency, about a billion dollars, uh, since that time. And we've reaped, uh, 1.8 million acre feet of water deliveries, uh, that's been put in whitewater. So if you just do the simple calculations on this, um, it's about $556 an acre foot through all year types. And these are, you know, real deliveries and real costs. Um, and I think, you know, we all realize the importance of the Metropolitan CBWD and, uh, DWA exchange agreement uh, by which, uh, whitewater, uh, would not have received as much benefits as it does, you know, from the Colorado River Exchange. And then the, uh, the panel, uh, the graph on the right-hand side, you know, just simply shows, uh, the total, uh, amount that has been recharged, including desert waters, uh, Table A and so on. Uh, so without it, uh, I think we would be down, uh, close to 4 million acre feet, uh, without, you know, the, the benefits of the state water, th- these exchange agreements. So, uh, I think one of the questions that's probably resonating through the board's minds as you're doing the consideration is, you know, do we still need, uh, the Delta Convenance Project? We've been with this for a long time. So I think this is a, uh, this graph on the, uh, left, uh, has been shown many times, uh, but I think it's no less, uh, important. Um, I think you see that dash line, uh, straight, uh, dash, straight vertical line, uh, in 2007, where there's a sharp, um, decrease, uh, on Table A allocations, um, and, you know, to the left is pre-wanger days. Um, so where the allocation was, uh, close to 90%, uh, and then after that, um, you know, and these are real deliveries. Uh, we're seeing 44% uh, from post 2007 until today. So, uh, this, you know, we're, we're experiencing, you know, the real decrease in reliability as a consequence of the changing hydrology and then also, uh, the regulatory pressures that's being exerted on the state water project system. Um, and DWR had, um, every few years, they'll update, uh, their estimation on what the project is able to deliver, uh, going out, uh, into future years. Uh, the very latest iteration, uh, came out, I think it was, it was finalized earlier this year, uh, was the 2023 delivery capability report. And in essence, and I think Kerry is probably in a better position to, uh, talk about this, but, uh, I'll go ahead and take a crack at it. Uh, they use 100 years worth of hydrology, uh, going, well, going all the way back to 1922. And with, uh, different conditions, they say, okay, you know, what is the, uh, state water project capable of, uh, with and without the project? And so the baseline scenario, they're showing about, uh, 58% uh, in 2020. And now realizing the fact that 2020, you know, we didn't see 58% reliability, this is just simply for modeling purposes. Uh, and going in the future, uh, with climate change, uh, they're seeing 41 to 50%. Uh, and 41% is in the 27, 2020, 2070 numbers. So, uh, I think it's pretty clear to say that, uh, the climate change will have some, uh, drastic impacts, uh, as, as Kerry mentioned before, uh, with no, if we don't, uh, execute further action. Uh, there's two other pieces of consideration I think the board, uh, is already aware of, but I just want to highlight for you. I think one is, uh, you know, this district actually not just serves, um, you know, this particular area, but, uh, we're also, uh, a partner on the, uh, the Regional Urban Water Management Plan, uh, which is so critical, I think, for the, uh, to make sure the water supply, uh, is there, uh, for all the cities, uh, in, in this, in this area. So, uh, the DCP is already baked in, uh, into that plan. Um, and then, uh, we have the not-so inconsequential, uh, decision on the post 2026 uncertainty on the Colorado River, which is still kind of working its way through. And it's probably going to take a few more ye- quite a few more years before we get, uh, to some, uh, resolution on that particular issue. Okay, uh, this is rather busy slide, but, uh, we were trying to, uh, put everything, uh, on one slide so that, uh, you know, the board has all the information at your fingertips. Um, and I think going from left to right, uh, I think, you know, this agency has been with this project through all those different iterations, you know, for a long time. Um, probably even before, uh, 2013. But what I want to highlight is, uh, on the, you know, the current Delta Convenance part and, you know, how much we paid and, uh, how much, uh, you know, we're expecting, uh, to pay if we stay with the project. So, um, if you look at the bottom, uh, the bottom blue arrow, uh, I kind of break down the Graham's number of 20.1 billion, uh, into a few segments here. So, uh, there's, I, there's a, a, a section, uh, pre-2029 or so that I kind of characterize as pre-construction. Uh, so this is, you know, permitting, design, I think everything to get us to kind of a shovel-ready state. And that number, I, as we know today, is a little less than $906 million. Uh, our total at, uh, if we stay at 3.78% is three, 34.2 million. Uh, out of that, uh, CVWD has already spent 12.9 million, which is that, uh, green arrow right above, uh, the blue. Uh, and that was, uh, through previous board actions, um, that you authorized in, uh, 2020 and 2022. So that brings us to where we are today. We've got a new cost estimate, uh, of 20.1 billion. And I think one of the things I did, did not say is, um, you know, kind of breaking it down in this fashion and why is it pre, um, Pago funding up until 2028 or 29? It's because of a project of this size, uh, anything can really, you know, stop it in its tracks. I think one of which the, um, Department of Water Resources is extremely concerned about, as well as state water contractors, is if we, uh, start, uh, going into this project and start issuing bonds, uh, without validating, uh, the authority of Department of Water Resources to construct this project and then therefore issue bonds, then any opposition can come in, uh, you know, file their lawsuit and put a grinding halt to the process. So I think, uh, DWR, in consultation with the contractors, uh, made the decision, uh, in the ear- early 2020s to say, okay, let's, uh, do a validation action in the courts first, uh, get that out of the way, validate, uh, through a, a judge that we do have the right to do this, and therefore we can go out, uh, to the bond market with a clean bill of health. Uh, as it, with anything legal, uh, related, uh, it takes time. So quite frankly, uh, we're hoping that 2028 will get a final resolution to this. I know it's a long time. I don't think COVID helped, uh, in terms of like, you know, the case, um, you know, uh, moving, movement of cases. So in essence, until we get to that point, uh, we have to go operate, uh, sort of on the Pago system. Now that doesn't really, um, I mean, that affects the, you know, DWR's ability to bond. But right now, I think the, uh, all the participants are paying, um, you know, using whatever instruments that we're allowed to. Uh, in our case, we'll be using the, uh, uh, property taxes, you know, from, um, as authorized to do. So the panel on the, uh, between 2026 and 2028, you'll see like the cost breakdown. So, uh, we're seeking 11.3 million, which is in the circle, uh, 4.5 million and, uh, 6.8 million for 26 and 27 respectively. Now these numbers, uh, represent about, uh, 5% of this total state water project tax, a little bit less than 5%. So, um, the staff has already kind of baked these costs in. Um, I show 2028 numbers, even though that's a question mark right now. We don't really know, uh, if that's going to be an ask. But, um, you know, so if, uh, we come to the point in, you know, 27 and we find out, okay, you know, the, um, validation action hasn't proceeded as quickly as we wanted to, uh, we will be coming back to the board, uh, at that point, uh, for perhaps another 10 million to get us to 2029. Um, I'm not going to cover this too much, but again, this is just, um, a resolutions by resolution, uh, look, uh, at what the board has done, uh, in the last, you know, 10-plus years, um, you know, in support of the different iterations, uh, of the tunnel project. So, um, a few more slides that are, uh, more directed towards the water supply impact. So I think Kerry Buck, Buckman, uh, showed, uh, 403,000 acre feet of benefits, uh, you know, from the project on average, and that's in 2070. So I'm providing three different, uh, stacked bar graphs to kind of show, uh, the exercise that DWR did when they went through their modeling. So in 2020, which is what they call the baseline, and the 2020 scenario obviously has been passed. And then we have two more climate change scenarios for 2040 and 2070, recognizing the fact that the project is, uh, not going to be completed until 20, 2045. So you can see the steady decline in, um, the yield, uh, in the state water project to CVWD. So just as a reminder, our Table A is 138,350, uh, acre feet. So we're declining from 80,000 acre feet in, uh, against the 2020 baseline to, uh, 69,000 and 57,000 respectively for 40, uh, 2040 and 2070. Uh, so at the 2070 mark, we'll be down to 41% reliability without, uh, any additional actions. So, uh, kind of putting the, uh, benefits of the, uh, Delta Convenance Project on this and the ability to kind of capture and move wet water, uh, when hydrology is favorable, uh, we can, I think at the worst case in 2070, we'll see about 11% increase, uh, at 15,200 or so, uh, acre feet. So, uh, that brings our reliability up to 52%. Uh, I mean, not, not a fantastic number, but certainly a lot better than 41%. So I think some of the things that, uh, just want to remind, um, you know, all of us is that, you know, we use the state project water as a basis of exchange with Metropolitan Water District, you know, to kind of benefit, you know, the whole Southern California region. Um, and I think, um, President Powell asked a really good question, uh, what happens if Metropolitan's not in it? Well, we really don't have much of a project. I mean, it's just too big of a hole to fill. But, uh, we're hopeful that, uh, Metropolitan's, um, board and staff, you know, seize the wisdom and continue with this project. So I think, uh, Kerry also mentioned there's an additional 941,000 acre feet that could have been available in this year with the, uh, with this tunnel. And I just want to highlight the fact that this was not, um, included in the modeling scenarios here. Uh, and it's because it's such a one-off. And, uh, but, you know, as the hydraulics changes, as the environmental restrictions, uh, get tighter, um, you know, will there be more years like 2024? I, you know, I don't know, but I think it's much better to have a tunnel in place, uh, to be able to take advantage of that. And then I think one of the biggest questions is, you know, if we're not in this project, um, how would we cope, you know, with the loss of the 15,200 acre feet, uh, a year, you know, without it? Without the DCP. So, um, no, no presentation on this would be complete without some discussion about costs. And, uh, we were really, uh, having a hard time trying to figure out what, you know, best to, to present to the board. That would be, you know, somewhat meaningful. So what we decided, uh, at this stage is to just show the raw 2023 costs. Um, there's a lot of different ways we could do this, but, you know, we did, we did not escalate, uh, these costs just because, again, I think any assumptions you make are probably not going to be correct. Uh, and then certainly financing, you know, we don't know what, you know, that's going to look like, uh, when we do have to go to financing in, you know, say 2029, for instance. So the stacked bar on the far, uh, left, uh, shows the raw total costs, uh, uh, that also includes operations and maintenance. And what we said was for a project of this size, and this is what Dr. Sunning also used as benefit cost analysis, is 100-year life. Um, so for our 3.78% of the 20.1 billion, we get the 761 million, uh, on the capital cost. So that, if we're going to have to pay it off today, that's how much we would have to have cash in hand. Uh, we also took the, uh, operating, uh, uh, scenario costs that were, uh, provided to us by the state water contractors. And, uh, we come out with about 100, you know, about 120 million dollars, a little bit less than 120 million dollars for the entire 100 years of operation. So a little bit over a million dollars a year for a confined total of 879 million dollars. And so this is over 100 years' life. Um, then subsequently, kind of moving from left to right, um, I just simply put the, uh, CVWD historical numbers, uh, just as a basis of comparison. So that's $556 an acre foot. So that's real numbers and real water that we obtained. Uh, the DCP number, uh, of 2023 dollars, okay, so this is, uh, simply the 879 million, uh, so the 100-year, uh, service life in 2023 dollars, uh, divided by the benefits of the water that we're getting over the 100-year period, which is, uh, 1.523 million acre feet. So that simple calculation yields about $578 acre foot. Now I will caveat that this number, uh, there's no finance, there's no escalation, there's no transportation cost. This is just simply for the raw cost of the, uh, the project as we, you know, as we're contemplating it now. And then, um, Graham didn't go, go into a lot of details, uh, about Dr. Sunning's number, but, uh, the benefit cost number that he came out with that yielded the 2.2, uh, BC ratio was 1325, um, an acre foot. And I am not an economist. I try to understand, uh, what, what he did. He discounted both the dollars of the project as well as the, the benefits. Uh, and it's way beyond my comprehension to try to explain what Dr. Sunning did. But this is a number that is out, um, in the media, so I just want to show it, you know, for comparison. Okay, um, so the planned activities for '25 and '26 through '27, uh, just very quickly. I think, uh, Kerry did a really good job of kind of talking about, you know, the governor's, um, desire to, uh, finish the permitting process, uh, you know, before his term is up. So there's, uh, a huge effort of, uh, consultation with the different, uh, fishery agencies and then, uh, the Water Board and the Delta Service Ship Council to get, move this process, you know, to a place where we're completed with our permits. Um, Graham kind of talked about, you know, the importance of fini- finishing up the engineering or making more substantial progress on engineering design so that it could actually be bidded out in a meaningful manner. And then, you know, there's some more environmental mitigation, land acquisition right away and, uh, so on that we need to do. Uh, and, you know, obviously stakeholder outreach is a huge component of this program. So, um, more important, uh, what, what are the future CVWD board actions? So with this, we have to go through, uh, a contract amendment, uh, to kind of include, uh, the project into, um, our existing contract. Uh, so this probably won't be done until, to, early 2027, and then obviously the next pre-construction funding, um, you know, if needed, uh, before the, uh, the decision to continue. Um, so I think with that, uh, here's the requested actions again, and be happy to, um, answer any questions. And I think Graham and Kerry are also available as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, you know, the, the one thing that hits, strikes me is, it seems, I mean, we're approving funding for more than a year from now. I mean, we don't even do our budgeting but a year and, you know, year by year, and yet this one's way out there.
Right.
Um, why is it, why now? Why are we doing this now? Why so early?
So, um, that's a good question. Um, from our perspective, um, the, the DCA, we've been operating at a pretty standard budget on the order of somewhere between 2030, maybe for 40 million dollars per year. It's been, um, primarily to support DWR's permitting activities, providing all the engineering resources necessary for that. Uh, however, we're now starting to think about the implementation phase. We're not there yet, but we have a pretty significant ramp up between now and 2027 and beyond. So in order for us to, to sort of, if you looked at that plot, it's a pretty steep ramp that actually starts in 2025, if that's the trajectory we're going on. So the key point for us is if we're heading in that direction, we need to know by the end of this calendar year so that we could spend the bulk of 2025 getting into place the contracts we need, the resources we need, uh, sort of setting that arc for where we're heading in '26 and '27. We can't do that quickly. Uh, we won't be able to do it in a short amount of time. Uh, it's going to take a number of processes to be established, new contracts, uh, new scope. You know, everything has to be built in order to do that and deliver, uh, along the schedule and costs that, that we've been requesting.
Yeah, that, that makes sense. Uh, so these dollars won't go from CVWD to your, your authority until, um, the earliest is 2026, right?
Kerry, is that a?
Correct.
Yeah.
Is that correct? So we won't pay, we won't pay these dollars in 2025, we'll pay them.
That is correct, but we will work on the funding agreements and that has to be in place so that we can set up the billing through the state water project. So there's administrative tasks that happen in '25 as well.
So if we approve this action today, So if we approve this action today, I I guess there's a lot of time then between now and and the money going hard. What happens if if Matt, for some reason, I know this sounds probably far fetched, but if if they if they decide they're voting no, right? What happens to our approval and commitment to make these payments? I mean, can we back out at that point?
I think that we we really understand that if Matt doesn't vote the way that we hope and think they will, that we have to reevaluate. So there would be a period of reevaluation where DWR and the DCA would work with the public water agencies and determine how to proceed. And if that determination is to stop, then then that money would not be collected. But there would be a period to develop that concept.
What's the?
I think in regards to that question, John, Matt would have the same question, right? Hey, we're half the project and we have to approve these funds and what about all the other twenty five other contractors? What what are they going to do? So I mean, they, it's kind of.
Yeah, I mean, it'd be easier to fill a two percent hole than a forty percent hole.
What's what's the the problem with with getting the validation first before making more expenditures?
So the validation takes some time. So we, as as Robert mentioned, we started that process in twenty twenty. There were COVID-related court delays for several years, so it took a little while to proceed. And the longer that we take on the permitting and engineering and the further this project construction gets pushed out, we have to handle the difference in escalation of the costs. So we're roughly looking at about a half a billion dollars a year if we delay the schedule. So proceeding now and having this planning and engineering work move forward on the schedule we've laid out saves two to four years in the end. And so that's a pretty significant amount of cost savings from us proceeding before the validation is in place.
Yeah, and I and I think I think that's some of the concerns that I've heard from Matt too is is all that uncertainty with the validation. You know, asking for more money, spending the money and then getting to a point where you can't, the project doesn't move forward.
Yeah.
So so I think it, you know, it's like a, I get what you're saying is, you know, we want to move forward so we can save money on the construction, but, you know, there's also, does it, how do you feel about the validation is?
I I'm not going to speak for the lawyers, but I think I feel pretty good. So to back to back up what the issue is with the validation case, I, so we filed in twenty twenty. We got the preliminary, the first ruling in the first court case. And the ruling didn't say that DWR doesn't have the authority to issue bonds. What we were looking for is a determination that the Delta Conveyance Project is part of the state water project. And they essentially said, you didn't give us enough information to make that determination. We filed it in twenty twenty. We had just issued the notice of preparation for CECL. We didn't have the project well defined. So we had a pretty general description of the project in that first case because we didn't know what the project is yet. So it wasn't so much a finding that we don't have the authority as it was a finding that that more detail was needed, which we now have. So I am feeling cautiously optimistic about this. It's hard for me to speak for how court will go. But generally, we think that there's a pretty solid basis for this project being part of the state water project and it will turn out that way in court.
So in regards to that, is the is the sole question in the validation action that the state water prod, that DWR has the authority to build the project? Or are there other issues wrapped into that, like the incidental tape permit, the water right and the EIR? I mean, are those separate tracks and process?
Yes, those are all separate. So the validation case is really narrowly related to financing. So when we go to issue bonds, we ask our bond counsel to make a determination in the bond that we have the authority to issue that bond. They are, as you might imagine, very cautious and they like to see it pretty directly laid out. So that's the purpose of this validation suit, so that we can say that this project falls under the state water project authorization and we have that documentation. What that does is it gets better security, so we have better rates. So ultimately, it it turns out that we we have a better rating, we get a better deal. This is more efficient for the state water contractors that are paying for it. The permitting is completely separate.
Okay, so in follow up to that, so could could those other three issues I mentioned, the ITP, the water right, the EIR? It could could those be derailers to the to the process and to the point of why you're asking for the money now? I mean, you know, we've been down the road before. Robert had the slide all the way back to the the two tunnels and all that is, could these be derailers and could we be spending money ahead of time and then get derailed later?
So we're really setting up the process to avoid that. I mean, I think that the idea of what we're doing now, we will have the ITP well before the spending comes into place. Right? Like we're looking at the ITP coming in in the next month or two, so having that in place. So ESA and CISA will be done by the end of twenty four. The water rights process is, it has started and will again be in, will be done by the end of twenty six as well Delta Steering Ship Council. So what we're trying to do right now is set up the next few years very well with the governor's direct involvement so that we can be in a good place that when we come back in twenty seven to determine if the project should move forward, you have all of that information in line. You have all the information you need to make that decision. So that's part of what's happening in the next few years is getting those answers so you have that more, that higher level of certainty.
If I may?
Yes.
One of the items added to the cost estimate was the two hundred million for community benefits program. I assume the majority, most of that money is going to be spent in Northern California, probably in the Delta area itself. What types of things are included in that?
So we've been working with the communities to develop what would be a part of the community benefits program. There are two key components. One of them is a grant process. So we would provide grant funds for projects that directly benefit the communities that could be affected by the project. And then the other is what we sometimes refer to as implementation commitments, which includes some processes related to the work, so job training, hiring targets, basically incorporating local businesses and people into the construction and then also potentially leave behind. So like if we're building a park and ride and the community wants it to remain, that it could stay after the construction process is complete. So we've been working with local communities. One example that we are are very close, I'd say, to to getting our negotiation in place is that we are working with the community to build a fire station. So right now, we've incorporated all of the costs of emergency response into the construction estimate. We're assuming we have to do it ourselves, so we're building those facilities within our construction sites. There is a community near the intakes that is interested in having us renovate and improve their fire station and have an agreement that they would provide those services. So it has a joint benefit. So part of that is is costs that we already had budgeted for emergency services. And then the increment would be part of the community benefits program. So they have an improved facility as well as some period where they know that they have some additional income to help with the staffing. And that really provides a community a really, really improved benefit. So that's a specific example. Other examples that that people told us they're interested in are water quality related projects, potentially levy improvements or flood projects, education, improvements to education in the area. So it really could be a broad cross section, potentially buying, helping them buy and renovate older buildings that would help their communities. So it's it's, it could be a broad cross section, but it really depends on what the communities are interested in.
So the plant, the planned project would move about six thousand acre feet and and that could move, you know, if you utilized it half the year, it can move two million acre feet of water. So with that being said, and with all the environmental issues with the current exports out of the Delta, with the two pumping plants, the Fed and the and the states. What, I mean, could, would this replace that, those pumping plants completely? Because it looks like it could if, you know, you could manage the storage in Orville and so forth. So it looks like it could, but what will happen to the other facility as this comes online?
So we, I probably should have talked a little about operations. So we are planning to continue operating the state water project sort of at a base level, mostly the way it is now. So continue Orville operations the way they are now and continue Banks operations the way they are now. So during the winter and spring, we would continue to first divert water in the South Delta to the extent that we can. And if we run into regulatory or physical constraints, then we would opportunistically divert additional water at the North Delta facility, essentially capturing high flows when they're available, so we're expanding the capacity of what we can divert. During the summer and fall, we potentially would shift some diversions from the south to the north to help with water quality management. But that's a relatively small percentage of the operations of the North Delta facility. And the reasons that we're doing that, there are a few of them. One of them is that not all state water contractors are participating. And so having the existing South Delta facility operate pretty much the way it is now makes the division of water much easier to identify so that the benefits are accruing directly to the participants. And also it's cheaper. The South Delta facility is less expensive to operate than the North Delta, so we might as well use the less expensive facility first when we can. So that's why we're looking at operating that first. So we are not looking at at, you had mentioned, operating at half of the year. I think very roughly, the percentage that would be south versus north is about eighty percent south, twenty percent north, but that's very rough. But it gives you an idea that it's it's much less than operating halftime, but it's operating when it's really important to be able to capture that water because it's not available beyond that timeframe.
So that's that's a good, that's a good point in in terms of, you know, it's it's, I don't know, I don't know how wide the pipe is. It's going to be a big pipe, right? A big tunnel. And six thousand acre foot is a lot of water to move through there. What's the minimum amount of water that can move through the tunnel? I mean, it just seems like, you know, that is it?
Yeah, it's going to end up being somewhere probably around, so it's a maximum six thousand cubic foot per second conveyance. So it's a thirty six foot internal diameter tunnel. It's going to end up being more to the sort of mechanical limitations, how how low you want to dial the pumps down, that sort of thing. So it could be as low as maybe three hundred CFS.
Wow.
You know, that's e- each of the pumps, we've got five hundred CFS pumps with variable frequency drives on them down in the South Delta. So it'll just become sort of an operational question of how low you want to go and what makes sense. There there are certain times when that very low flow is important to just keep the water moving through the system. It's in, it's designed to flow at a maximum rate, six feet per second, so it should keep everything pretty clean. Periodically, we may need to to just move water through there at a slow rate.
Is the intent to keep the pipe as full as possible so that it's has a better seismic survivability?
So, yeah, the intent is to keep it generally full. It would only be dewatered infrequently, maybe every ten years or so for operations and maintenance purposes. Other than that, it will always be flooded. It's not worth the effort of dewatering it. And you're right, it would, it improves the performance when it's full. Having an empty tunnel is a pretty extreme condition from, you know, for a number of geotechnical analyses, so it's, but it's designed to handle that. You know, it's designed to handle that extreme condition, but in general, it would stay flooded.
So it's thirty six foot interior diameter and it's up to six thousand CFS?
Correct. That's right.
And then, um, just just to confirm, this isn't creating any new water. This is for us to keep, trying to get back to our.
Depends on your point of view, yeah, it's new.
I think that Robert showed the slide where in twenty twenty, it looks like there is additional water, but we know the project isn't going to be operating in twenty twenty. We're looking at operations starting when construction is complete, which is around twenty forty two. So by that point, we will have already experienced sort of losses associated with climate change and sea level rise. So that additional water diverted with the Delta Conveyance Project would be working to get us back to about the same level as we are now.
So also our our table, what do you call it, Table A? That that's not changing, right?
No.
Just the percentage of what we're actually going to get.
We're getting to fifty, we're at whatever percent, we're getting down to fifty percent.
Yeah, I think the details of how we manage that, we still need to work out in the next couple of years as part of the contract amendment process. I think that there is likely going to be an additional piece that is specific to the percentage that you would get of the Delta Conveyance Project that would be sort of equivalent to Table A. So that's something that that would be changing as we go forward.
So to that point, if there are other contractors who don't participate, then maybe costs and benefits would be moved over to to the districts that are participating?
Yeah, so the the Delta Conveyance Project, it's a really key principle that that the benefits of the Delta Conveyance Project stay with those that are participating. So the the operations and maintenance of the state water project overall would be attributed to everyone in the existing Table A manner. But the Delta Conveyance Project would have its own system with just those that are participating.
That'll be an interesting management scheme.
Yes, yeah, no problem.
I I'll make one more comment. I I I I don't know how difficult it would be to do this, but I I would feel more comfortable with with a one year approval. I think it'd be a good chance for for you both to come back, for us to hear on what the progress has been like, if there's any new concerns. I don't quite understand if that would create any issues for you, if it's just more paperwork because we'd have to do another amendment for the second year. But I I think I would, I would prefer that. I think it just allows for, at least for me personally, to keep tabs on this. This is something that has been, at least for me, hard to understand. Obviously, we've been working on this for several years now. Project seems to be changing and then we think we're getting there and that we're not getting there. And so it has a huge impact, I think, to us on on some of our rates and things like that. So that's that's kind of where I want to land. I don't know. That's a huge issue, but just throwing it out there.
I can maybe talk a little about the logistics from our end, but maybe you have something to add. Yeah, so I think from our end, that that would be a logistical challenge. You know, as I mentioned, we're looking for approval now so that, as Graham described, in twenty twenty five, we can ramp up for twenty twenty six. If you approve only twenty twenty six funding now, it means that we would need to be coming back before we even start the twenty six funding to look at twenty seven funding. So it's hard to have that gauge, you know, we we wouldn't be able to check partway through the funding to see if the the money, as you were saying, I think has been spent correctly and well because we would be needing to do it over a year before that funding would begin because we need to go through the process, the administrative process of setting it up within the state water project, as well as the process for the D the DCA of putting contracts in place. So it would, I think, increase the amount of administrative work pretty significantly within the DWR and DCA system.
Yeah, Vice President Estrada, I think maybe, you know, a couple of observations on your your comment. I think first is staff has already kind of looked out, you know, way well past like twenty twenty nine. And I think at eleven cents per hundred dollars of a sense valuation. I think the state, the state water project tax fund is actually in a really healthy condition. So that's just one comment. I think, you know, your other comment about, you know, coming back and, you know, finding out what the status of the project is. I think there's, I think that's a reasonable request and we can certainly do that. I think there's opportunities outside the boardroom where, you know, like during Aqua, for instance, you know, that happens twice a year. I think Graham and Kerry are always there to give a status update. And then I think the third point is not a criticism of DWR, so, you know, please, yeah, I want to make sure you're not staying right behind me. Is the DWR process is a little cumbersome, I would say. So right now, I think they're already starting to work on, you know, a couple of years down the road on the statement of charges issues. And then I think beyond that, I I think maybe just kind of highlight a little bit of what Graham was talking about. I think wrapping this up, I think the DCA, the Design Construction Authority, which is, you know, sort of like the engineering auxiliary arm, you know, for D DWR and hiring consultants that DWR DWR actually needs. You know, these folks are, you know, they they're very talented. And so I think they want some some idea that, you know, they're, they they have a job, you know, past twenty twenty six. So I think, you know, the dollar amount that the state is asking for, and by the way, this is a request from DWR, now the three hundred million dollars twenty six and twenty seven, they did not parse that out. You know, gives the consultants the certainty, hey, you know what? I have a job. This is a real project. So anyways, I think, you know, for all those reasons, I just want to, you know, to to highlight.
For good reasons. Thank you for clarifying.
Could could we make our? Could, could we make our approval contingent on? The approvals of Kern and Matt? That's what I think I'd like to do, I mean, I like the idea of the two-year thing, but I get that it wasn't parsed out that way. Maybe that's a problem, but what about it? You know, since we're going for, you know, ahead of them, really, the, you should get the big ones first, I would think. Can we make this action contingent on their approvals?
Well, certainly, I think, um, you know, this is not effective till twenty twenty-six anyway, so, yeah, I, I think, um. You know, I, I'm trying to think of the language, so we, w- would you want to have that language baked in into the, uh, our resolution?
One thing that may become complicated about that in terms of Kern, uh, you know, Matt's gonna act as, as the Met Board. Uh, Kern may have districts that participate at different levels, and I think that.
Correct.
In the past, they've had, uh, districts participate at a fifty percent or twenty-five percent, and so. To write the language of a whole current participation may be a little difficult in terms of, you know, what the parameters are. What, what would consist of an approval, but what we might be able to write some of that, I, I'm not sure.
Fair.
Okay, um, yeah, no, I, I agree, I think it's. And I think what, um, we're asking for here, uh, President Powell, is to kinda limit our commitment, uh, to our share of three point seven eight percent. Uh, I think if there's, I think to, uh, Director Nelson's point, if others are short or whatever. I think it's really up to DWR to figure out, okay, how do we kinda patch that gap?
Well, well, or you unwind the, the project, and I wanna be able to get out if they unwind the project.
Right.
I don't think our resolution contemplates that right now.
Yeah, and if I may, this is really a question for, you know, Steve Abbott, who's working on this project, but. Most of the resolution has to do with sequel approvals, which. Really should move forward regardless of whether you end up being part of the project.
Yeah, that's not the part I'm concerned about.
Right, so then, so then section six is the approval of the funding.
Right.
So. I don't know how you wanna parse, if you could parse that out.
Well, it would be our, okay, yeah, so our, our authorization for the funding for twenty-six and twenty-seven would. Be contingent on approval by Matt and substantial approval by Kern? Something like that?
Something like that, I, I, I think the, I, I mean, it's a good point, John, it's like, what, when, when does? When does the project work for DWR with the amount of funding commitment and when does it not? And so when would our money kick in and when would it not, right? And so I think.
Yeah.
I think that's a, that's a good point, and it, 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 so. I, I, I think that's a really good point, I, I had another question about, you know, what the public benefit is, if it's two point two. You know, are there gonna be additional, uh, if the ratio is two point two, uh? Uh, it, could there be additional public funds, but that's kind of another question, but I think the issue that we're trying to figure out is. When would our funding kick in to the project? Because of other, because of the, the big gorillas, I guess, uh, approving? And when would it, when would we just keep the funds, uh, you know, within our own agents?
So, I, I can't speak with certainty here, but. Even though, and this is probably not what you wanna hear. Um, even though the board is taking an action to authorize funding at this point. Until the funds are actually appropriated and sent, I believe the board has the ability to rescind that authority. At a later date.
Don't know.
That's what I wanted to know is, are we cutting, uh, you know, when are we cutting the check, is it? Is it two checks, is it one, one big check?
We know we haven't approved the budget for those years, we won't do that for a long time.
Typically, it is included in the statement of charges for the state water project, so we do, uh, incorporate it within that bill. I, I think I also just wanted to mention that, that this has happened before, right, like on California Water Fix, is that took a turn and that work stopped. We did work with the agencies to stop and, and readjust, so at that point, many agencies had already contributed dollars. Towards moving forward with California Water Fix. We stopped the project, we calculated how much was left, and we worked with each agency to determine if they wanted a refund. Or if they wanted to roll that forward onto the Delta Conveyance Project. Uh, we did cut checks for many agencies, so I think I just wanted to provide some reassurance that this is pretty normal, we've done this before. Like, we can absolutely.
Yeah.
Work out the plan of how to adjust if this doesn't move forward. And so I think the idea that, that if something changes, we will adjust, um, not collect these funds, because it would be before then. And we have money that's in our accounts now, that we would have to work to, uh, figure out what would be needed to shut down and then return the funds. So it's not, there isn't a, an irretrievable commitment of resources here.
Yeah, I think on page five of, uh, Robert's, uh, um, deck. It has funds showing that were transferred from California Water, to your point, from California Water Fix to.
Yeah.
To the whole project and CBWD got one point two million back on that, so.
Well, yeah, no, I understand that, I mean, that doesn't give me a whole lot of comfort, I mean, you can go back to the peripheral canal and. You know, see that this concept has been sort of stumbling a- along for, for decade, for four decades, five decade. It's been a, so we don't know what's gonna happen, the future is un- uncertain. All I'm saying is we, we're so far out in the future, we're a little bit ahead of the, uh, the larger agencies. And I'd like to see our financial commitment contingent on their approval of, of, of funding of the project. Of those twenty-six and twenty-seven year fundings.
I think practically, it will be, um, but, so if, I mean, is it, I mean, Robert, uh, well, since you're all here. I mean, could, could that, if we put that into our resolution, is that? Is that gonna, that would kill the deal, I wouldn't think, it would just be, uh, kinda clarifying our position, is that? And your position, is that the project's not gonna move forward unless there's a, um, uh. What is that, a, um, a, another people move it forward?
So, I, I, I think our preference is, you know, kinda leave the language alone, but I, I understand the, um, you know, the concerns here. Uh, and if, I think what Kerry was saying, uh, in terms of, you know, the process. When it gets to that point, you know, is, is not sufficient and there's additional language that's needed. Um, I'm just trying to think through, you know, the Kern issue, because I think that's, that's gonna be a really tough one, uh, to put into, um, into words. Uh, I think Metropolitan, as, uh, Director Nelson talked about, you know, they've moved as blocks, so I think that's a little bit easier perhaps. So. W- would, would you be comfortable with us just, you know, because Metropolitan is the largest entity? Uh, the forty-seven percent is, you know, not gonna be easy to, to fulfill. I mean, would you be comfortable with us just putting in some language about Matt?
I would.
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, the other option is we just wait and see what they do.
And that's the other option too.
You know? Right, but. Then we'd have to do this, uh. Yeah, you can do the secret without.
Yeah. And I, I don't think Matt is, you know, going until like the very last meeting in the year. And I think, uh, you know, we've been strongly urged by DWR to finish the process. You know, in this quarter, so.
That's fine, alright, well, I'll, I'll move approval of this item with one change that we make our. Authorization of funding for twenty-six and twenty-seven, um, contingent on approval by Metropolitan Water District.
To approval of.
To approval of, of, of. There, of, uh, s- the similar action that they're gonna be taking up.
Okay, I'd second that.
So that would be in section six, which is the approval funding section.
Um, Director Aguilar, I know we haven't heard from you, uh, do you have any comments?
Director Aguilar, it'll be, um, star six to unmute. He had to drop off video.
Okay, um, well, let us know if he comes on. Guess I'd like to hear from him before we vote.
Did, did Valley Water approve, um, the, uh, the same resolution, just with different, their, with their agency information?
You, are you, uh, when you say Valley Water, I assume you're talking. Oh, uh, no, I think Santa Clara Valley is still waiting. Uh, I, I think I, I, I might have misspoken, uh, Santa Clarita.
You say Santa Clara.
Yeah, they're so similar, sorry.
I know.
Uh, via telephone, and so I'm trying to tell him how to unmute. Um, he said it's not working, go ahead. So, he's listening in, he just cannot, um, provide comment.
Okay, and he said go ahead? Alright.
He does not have any questions.
That works for me. Alright.
But that's not a vote, that's just.
So are, are we ready to vote then? I think we are.
Yeah, I, I think we are, John, I would like to say though, that I think that. I think that the way it's written now and the operational aspect of it. Uh, the de facto is that it's not gonna move forward unless Metropolitan and a substantial, uh, contingent of Kern. You know, approve the project and g- and get the, um, the dollars rolling forward. So I, I, you know, our whole, uh, future depends on state water project and Colorado River Water. So we know that we're certainly facing a diminutism of, uh, of supply in the Colorado River Basin. And, um, uh, you know, I think we're all in on state water project reliability. And when you look at the, the Ranger decision and the effect that it had on, uh, eighty-six percent. Versus a forty-three percent, I mean, it's basically cut the supply, um, uh, dramatically. And, you know, we have biological opinions that, uh, are causing that to be, um, minimized, uh, with our supply. So, uh, when we look at this valley, I look at the state water project water supply being, um, our supply. So I, I understand the fundamental concern that you have, um, but I, you know, I. Um, I do believe that it would send a strong signal to the other contractors that, uh, that there's a large support for this. Uh, in, in spite of what they might think, and I, you know, I'm not quite sure how the Metropolitan vote would go. But, um, certainly there's, uh, about a fifty-fifties, you know, support there and, uh, you know, it may go either way.
And, and so if Matt did not go along with it, I think what's, what they're saying is eleven million wouldn't do it. So it's not as if that dollar amount would be forced on you if Matt bowed out.
Right.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I see your, your comment that we're relying on state water project is true. But I would add to that, that we're also relying on Matt, cause this ain't gonna happen without him.
Right.
And so, you know, in many ways that, that our, our, uh, our future is tied to their actions as well. And, you know, I, i- if anything, that, the men, the slight, the small amendment to the. Resolution, um. Would recognize that, or at least call it out, that, that, you know, that's part of the requirement of. You know, what, what does success look like, it, it includes them voting yes.
Yeah.
So. I don't know.
Fair enough, I'm gonna vote.
Are you okay with it?
Thank you.
Um, alright, well, we do have a motion in a second, um, I guess we'll do a roll call vote, just in case Director Aguilar is on.
Um, uh, Mr. President, he just advised me that he's jumping off, he's having too many, um, technical issues, so he jumped off the line at nine twenty-six. So we no longer need to roll call.
Alright, well then, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That passed three, zero, with two absent.
Thank you.
So you don't have to come back then.
Thank you, Kerry.
Thank you. Never did ask what the pipe is made out of. That was my other question, sorry. It's not gonna change our.
It's concrete, there, it's reinforced concrete with a variety of other, you know, sort of fancy components, but. These are precast segments, so they're large.
You put like a liner on the inside of it?
Um, so the, the segment itself, it's a one-pass construction process, so it's got gaskets that seal. Connections and dowels to make sure that everything lines up right, and then it's the compression that, that seals.
Keeps it.
There is a grout layer on the outside of it, that, that fills the annulus between the soil on the outside of those segments, but. They're cast, uh, precast segments, they're on the, usually for this particular design, it, I think it's a seven segment ring plus a keystone. Uh, so that gets brought in, conveyed out to the head of the machine and erected.
Interesting, okay.
It is an interesting process.
It is interesting.
Yeah, it's one of those things you wanna watch.
Yeah. It's the state of the art in terms of excavation at this point, teleboring machines. You know, there's the old sort of drill and blast approaches for rock, but in this type of soft ground, this is the state of the art process.
Okay.
Yeah, it's a sing- single pass process.
Yeah, interesting, thank you. Alright, uh, onto something much simpler. Seven B's approval of the Cal- California Colorado River Contractors forbearance Agreement.
Yes, sir.
For the, for the, uh, future conservation agreements under the lower Colorado River Conservation and Efficiency Program, or Robert.
Right, oh, um, so I think y- your comment, uh, Mr. President. You know, the last one about Metropolitan and, you know, their, their discussions. So, uh, they actually, Metropolitan had a, you know, one, one of their water, one water committee meetings, uh, yesterday afternoon, and, uh, which I watched. Uh, there was a lot of discussion about, about an hour and a half, Graham, you think? They took off, okay, um, you know, regarding, you know, there, uh, was no board action yesterday, it was just, you know, information. And, uh, I think one of the board directors did ask, uh, about, uh, CBWD and Desert Waters, uh, involvement in this. And, you know, how that water's gonna be kinda, you know, brought in, you know, when the, so. I think the staff, you know, kinda mentioned that they're working with us, uh, on the, um, on the agreements, you know, on how to handle those, uh, insights as well, so.
As far as making sure it's included in the exchange agreement?
That, that's right, yeah, so, you know, let's, you know, so they are thinking about that.
Yeah.
To kinda close that discussion.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I guess we need that too, is to make sure it's included in the exchange agreement.
No, we, we're, we're working with Matt on this, so, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, so, um, uh, thank you, so, uh, the request before you is to approve the, um, forbearance agreement for the California parties. For twenty-four to twenty-six, uh, and I think as the board may have remember, uh, earlier this year. We, uh, you know, the, this board approved the, uh, twenty twenty-three, uh, um, forbearance agreement. Uh, for, you know, that, the pot of water created during that year. So this is actually to cover the balance of the, um, years of, uh, conserved water, you know, uh, before. The end of the, um, interim guidelines. So this is just the, the most current table, uh, of the California's participation in lower Co- uh, Colorado Conservation and Efficiency Program. That's funded under the, um, Inflation Reduction Act. So California's contribution, uh, over this time period, uh, until twenty twenty-six is, uh, roughly. A little less than one point two mill acre feet, and it's kinda broken down, you know, by these different agencies. You'll see CBWD occupies the first two, um, so. The, um. So the, the rest of them are kinda outlined here. So, I think, um, the board probably, uh, has been in the conversation enough to know that. Uh, you know, forbearance agreements are pretty common, uh, when, you know, these kind of, uh, programs are implemented. Uh, so this is a part of routine, uh, process, you know, for the California agencies, uh, when we're intentionally not taking the full allocation. And, uh, you know, this actually just provides assurance, legal assurance, that the water's not diverted by a third party. Uh, and then also, I think Metropolitan, uh, to a lesser degree, and reclamation, uh, to a higher degree, that their financial commitments. Because, uh, you know, for us, we're getting paid four hundred dollars an acre foot. you know, for us, we're getting paid four hundred dollars an acre foot, as a part, you know, part of the funding parties, uh, that their investments are protected. So, in our, um, agreement, uh, System Conservation Implementation Agreement with reclamation, uh, as well as the other California parties, these are kinda baked in as a part of the, uh, uh, conditions prior to, uh, reclamation, releasing the funds, uh, for payment. So anyways, um, I think the other parties, I think Metropolitan's, uh, board has already approved this, uh, as has I D's. Uh, so I think it's just us, and then I think City of Needles, uh, are the remaining ones. So, uh, with that, I would, uh, entertain any questions and, um, ask you to consider approving this item.
Pretty straightforward.
Yes, sir.
I'd, I'd move approval of the.
Robert, if I could, um, and I've had this thought prior, um, our groundwater curtailment at Levy only goes to twenty-five. Is, and I don't know whether the board's interested in extending that to twenty-six, but if we did, since most of the other ones moved through twenty-twenty-six, we would need to have a new forbearance agreement as well as a new agreement with reclamation, is that correct?
I, I think that sounds right.
Okay.
Well, we got an early start, and maybe we, maybe we should, you know, curtail the curtailment for a year and see how it goes. I mean, I, you know, we may wanna, we may wanna get that going again.
I agree.
Yeah.
You mean start the replenishment, not extend the curtailment.
Double negative, I said curtail, curtail the curtailment.
Yeah.
Double negative.
I can follow you.
Understood.
I, I wanna make sure I, I, I understand, um, the action here and, uh, is this, uh, is this different, or is it part of the other commitments that we need to make, the other presentations that you were presenting on, on, on the totals of the, of the river as a whole, the system, you know, how? So, you know, how you've talked about, um, I think the need to reduce volumes on the entire system and the negotiations between the upper basin and the lower basin.
Yeah, no, uh.
This, this doesn't touch that, right?
Uh, no, thi- this is completely separate. Uh, so this is like the interim, uh, actions that we're taking. Uh, the, the other one, uh, Vice President Estrada, that we talked about, was actually the negotiations, you know, for post-two thousand twenty-six.
And, and this, this only goes to two thousand twenty-six?
That's, that's right. So these were the actions that, um, I think, you know, the, uh, commissioner requested, I think back in two thousand twenty-two, uh, when the system, you know, looked like was on the verge of collapsing. Uh, so.
A- and this is the one where we've, where we've already approved the thirty-five thousand acre feet for three years?
Right, so that's the first one, uh, 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 first line on this table, and then the second one, I think the board, you know, just approved the amended, uh, you know, felony agreement is the second line. So that goes until two thousand twenty-six.
Okay, so we've already approved that, and so what's, what, what are we doing here?
So, as I, as I see it, is, is everyone who's approved it already has agreed that they won't lay claim to our forty-five thousand acre foot of water, and we won't look at the accounting and, and say, uh, and lay claim to their conserve water, that, to flow through the priority system, but we're agreeing that, okay, you save the water, put it up in Lake Mead, and we're not gonna put that on our water order. That's, that's just supply that we're gonna leave in. Like, is that, is that a reasonable, uh, explanation?
Uh, I think that's a great explanation, thank you.
Yeah, that makes sense. Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Um, thanks, Robert. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, passed three oh.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's easy. C, authorized solicitation bids for this construction of this Warp Ten T One filter. Armando, good morning.
Good morning, President Powell, members of the board, audience, fellow staff. Uh, just for the record, my name is Armando Rodriguez, uh, engineering manager with the Engineering Department. The purpose of the board's item is to seek, uh, authorization to solicit bids, uh, for the construction of the Warp Ten T One Filter, uh, repair project, uh, and what I would like to do is, uh, within Warp Ten, in this is we have, uh, two tertiary filters, uh, T One, um, that, uh, you know, on paper, it is a capacity of ten, and it's been operation since nineteen, uh, eighty-eight. But we cannot do ten to NGD, uh, because of its aging, um, and we can only really do five NGD. And we also have a T Two, um, tertiary filter that has five NGD. So, between, that was, that, that T Two filter was, uh, installed, uh, back in twenty-two thousand three. So between T One tertiary filter facility, that is age, that is thirty-six years old, we cannot do five NGD, we can only do five. And then with the T Two, um, that was recently installed here, and they say recent, but it's really twenty-one years ago, the T Two filter, uh, facility, we're gonna do only five. So we only can do, really, just do ten NGD. And so this project is all about establishing, uh, reliability, resiliency, redundancy, and really getting back to the capacity that we really wanted to see within the T One tertiary facility. Uh, we just don't have it there. Um, it is, uh, we are, of the six basins within T One, tertiary filter, three of the basins are currently in use, and we experience a lot of media loss. Uh, this media loss is very expensive because it's anthracite coal and then gravel, and so we're barely trying to keep up, uh, with the current demand. And the current demand is eighteen non-potable customers, uh, close to fifteen thousand acre feet. But thanks to your approvals, we have done a lot of pipelines, uh, on the non-potable water side, along Varner, Frank Sinatra, Warner Trail, that we're gonna bring on another twenty-one non-potable customer, doubling the capacity, uh, needed, uh, within these tertiary facilities to make those customers, uh, feed those customers with this facility. So I'll stop here, uh, to ask if you would like me to continue with my presentation. Was there any specific questions associated with this project?
Not really.
Armando, will this, will this enable greater than ten mi- ten NGD?
Thank you.
Um, good question. Yeah, so what we want to do is, like, we're like you said, we wanna be able to reestablish the capacity, but more important also, resiliency, redundancy. We think we can, um, establish a fifteen NGD facility within the same uh, concrete footprint, uh, within the T One fo- filter, and then at the same time, save money, uh, by decommissioning T Two filter and, uh, into a tune of, uh, about half a million dollars annually. And by not operating T Two, T Two is very energy intensive, all the backwashing that is required, all the scouring is required. We think we can save an additional thirty-eight thousand annually electrical cost. Uh, so both from an operational cost, it's a half a million, and then electric cost, it's about thirty-eight million. We can focus all our energy and all our improvements on T One, um, install cloth, uh, cloth disc filters, which are, uh, more resilient, a lot better product, and then they're expandable. So we wanna be able to see the plant grow, which has another cloth disc, uh, disc, uh, in, and we'll be able to, uh, more efficiently produce our tertiary water for the, uh, twenty-one new po- non-potable customers that are coming.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve?
I'll second.
Okay, great. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, passed three oh.
Thank you.
Onto D. This is the update for the slope protection requirements. David, good morning.
Good morning. Purpose of this item is to authorize updates to the slope protection requirements within the stormwater section of the Development Design Manual. As you know, our public purpose here in the Coachella Valley and the realm of stormwater is to provide protection to life and property, uh, for the entire Coachella Valley from regional flooding, not the flooding that comes from the introduction of a parking lot or rooftops, which is the concern of the local cities. Uh, we're talking about tens of thousands of cubic feet per second that emanate from hundreds of square miles of watersheds that surround the Coachella Valley, and ultimately discharge into our main channel that bisects the valley, which you can kinda see here on the screen, the, the blue, light blue line. It's about a fifty-mile-long channel, it's the Whitewater River, Coachella Valley Stormwater Channel, and it has the one-hundred-year conveyance capacity of about thirty-nine thousand cubic feet per second. And we have a requirement for all properties that are adjacent to the channel, um, when they are introducing structures within the channel, uh, that they either keep the structure, or I'm sorry, when they're introducing structures adjacent to the channel, that they keep them either three hundred feet away from the top of slope, or that they install, uh, concrete slope protection. And so recent engagement, uh, with the public has triggered a desire, uh, to engage with our, um, our on-call hydrology and hydraulics consultant to reengage in the development of the, of the, uh, requirement, the so-called setback requirement, uh, for building adjacent to the channel. And so, again, we hired N H C, who's our on-call, worked with us for years, uh, who understands the valley, and, uh, they took a look at other agencies throughout the American Southwest, Albuquerque, Tucson, Maricopa County, Arizona, State of Arizona, even the city of Boston, uh, who had similar arid climates, similar soils, and that sort of thing, to see what these folks are doing, um, as it relates to requirements when building next to the cha- their channels. And we did find a pattern of, uh, throughout all of them. First of all, we should say that the approach to the slope protection that these folks were doing is pretty much aligns with what the Coachella Valley Water District has been doing. Uh, the only caveat is that they, they did have, um, more options for developers, which is something that we're proposing here. Um, N H C developed this report, which is included in your package. We sent it around to six other engineering firms to take a look and see to it that, um, the professional community agreed with the analysis, and in general, the professional community did. The three options that we have developed and that we're proposing here to include, again, are intended to provide some flexibility for folks that are building adjacent to the channel. Option one tends to be the most conservative, it's just a flat equation, and it gives you an offset in general throughout the valley that's gonna be roughly about three hundred feet, and it doesn't mean, by the way, that you can't build within the three hundred-foot setbacks, it just means you can't put a structure that's gonna house people in it. You can put a park, you can put parking lot, you can put overhangs, anything else within that setback. The option two uses our existing standards that we have now, um, as it relates to investigating soil properties, cohesiveness of soils, um, slope in the channel, and the hydraulics within the localized area, the geometry of the channel, are you on a curve, are you on a straight, uh, shot, those, those sorts of things. And allows you to develop a setback requirement based off of that. And we accidentally, or I accidentally left it out of the, the K Two guideline, but if you look in the report on figure number three, it does show the setback would vary throughout the valley, a hundred fifty feet in some cases, three fifty in others, most of it's roughly around two hundred, so it does provide a little bit of, um, a break, if you will, for the folks if they go into a harder look and they, they can take some soil samples and get a sense for what's out there. And then the third option leaves it up to the developer, depending on their appetite for what kind of engagement that they wanna do, recognizing that there's, um, you know, uh, there's folks doing this sort of thing all the time, and new ideas, new perspectives might pop up, new programs, those sorts of things. And it gives an opportunity for the developer, uh, to engage on that front and see if they can come up with some better topic, so, or rather, approach. So these are the three options. The intent, again, is to provide some flexibility for folks constructing near the channel, and, uh, leave it open to, um, a little bit more of a discussion and less of our current standard, which is just three hundred feet or nothing. And I'll leave it to any questions you all have.
Yeah, okay, good. Yeah, I thought that was somewhat helpful to give the options. Um, I noticed they took out the, the turf language, uh, and for existing, um, homes that are on the cha- next to the channel with turf protecting them, does that have any impact on them?
Um, most of the areas where we have that, uh, instance, we've got, there is some concrete slope protection that's in there. The analyses that were developed and, and looking at the turf, um, there's been new developments in those analyses, um, which is identified in the report. And we, and we've determined that the capacity for, the sheer capacity or the protection that a, um, turf provides is not quite aligned with what we would, we would hope. But in general, the areas that are currently developed that are adjacent to where there's existing turf, um, there, with a couple of minor exceptions, the slope is lined. But there is concern with, with providing, allowing for turf to be used as slope protection, uh, given the constraints with, you know, water supply, the fact that most of those are different property owners. So how do you get those folks to guarantee they're gonna maintain, uh, the slope protection? Or the, the grass?
Right. So, so the, the answer is that this does not impact the existing?
That's right.
Folks? Okay. Alright.
Yeah, so I guess I di- I didn't really understand completely the ask. Um, is the ask to provide the three options within the manual, the Development Design Manual, um, um, and then I, I s- I see there's some specifics on that, so could, could you describe the ask a little?
Yes, it probably could have been worded better, but the ask is, um, so the current standard we have is that there's a, there's a requirement for three, if you're within three hundred feet, concrete slope protection or no structure within the three hundred foot, that's the current requirement. So the ask is to introduce some flexibility into the Development Design Manual that gives three options, depending on the appetite for the developer, how they wanna engage, uh, that would provide, um, some level of flexibility in general for what would be required in that particular location. And so there's, there's new language introduced into our Development Design Manual that provides all the parameters and the details associated specific to each of those options.
Okay. Essentially, we're at, we're approving the red line document, right?
That's correct, yeah.
So, we're, we're keeping the, we're keeping the status quo option and then adding two more, or even the, the s- the three hundred foot is, is now able to be modified?
Yes, we're keeping the status quo option, which is option one, which is effectively the same. And then we're providing a deeper dive with option two, and then option three provides for the developer to come up with their own approach that we might find, we may or may not find acceptable.
Yeah.
But just trying to leave an option open for somebody who's got some other ideas that we can investigate.
Alright. Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Okay, thanks, David. Um, yeah, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Passed three oh.
Thank you.
Next is E. This is the Dan Charlemagne. Power controllers.
Morning.
Good morning, again.
Um, so, uh, this authorization is to procure, uh, fifty additional PLC panels, uh, for our phase, uh, PLC upgrade project, which is phase three. Uh, the purchase agreements would be with Northern Digital, who has done all our work to date, as well as a new provider, Integrated Power Systems, in the amounts of three hundred twenty-five thousand seven hundred nine and three hundred seventy-seven thousand two hundred twenty-eight, respectively. Uh, the authorization also includes, uh, a professional services agreement for N D I for programming of these new PLCs, in the amount of two hundred seventy-three thousand nine hundred twenty dollars, with a contingency of thirty-three thousand one twenty-three, for a total request of one million ten thousand. Phase three of the project will get a hundred and ten of our hundred and sixty-nine sites online with new PLCs. Um, I recall, uh, with the SCADA master plan and the implementation, in two thousand seventeen, they were assuming that our component would be about ten million dollars. With this request, we'll be at three million dollars, and we have one phase left. So I'm very proud of the team's electronic shop and domestic for the work they've done, uh, to be able to do a lot of the work themselves, uh, as well as, uh, the programming component with Luis Masia and Jeff Taft. Uh, we do have the money in the budget, we have five hundred and ten thousand in the operating budget, and five hundred thousand in the cap, no, five hundred and ten thousand capital improvement budget, five hundred thousand in the operating budget, uh, so we feel we're very, uh, comfortable that we have the money to do the work. Uh, it's a multi- Uh, comfortable that we have the money to do the work, uh, it's a multi-layered plan. Um, we're going to have a lot more information coming from the sites, instantaneous data, data is power, power to make decisions, informed decisions. And we're going to save extensive costs over the lifetime of the project. Uh, we went up to bid uh July thirty-first and received bids on the twenty-eighth of August. Um, we had eight different schedules and we could award based on the schedule, uh, we had four bidders. Uh, the two lowest bidders actually ham and egg the schedules. Um, and as such, we're recommending that N D I uh provide twenty of the P L C panels and I P S thirty of the panels. Um, with that, N D I submitted a protest in regard to a certification requirement and the location of their facility, which is in Florida. Um, C B W D evaluated the situation uh. And determined that it was in the best interest to split the award between the low- two lowest bidders. Uh, to maximize the the amount of panels, so we put out the bid fifty-seven panels with the money we have, we're able to award fifty of the panels. Again, which will give us a hundred and ten out of a hundred and sixty-nine completed. The technical difficulties that they protested um were deemed immaterial by our staff. Um, and with that, we would like to proceed with the award, a split award between N D I and I P S to maximize the number of panels. In the amount of one point one, one point zero one million dollars. Um, this also includes three components for N D I as far as programming, and bear with me. One is automated automated demand response, we have twenty-two sites that were built fifteen years ago that need updated programming. So that when deemed appropriate and we need to curtail, we can shut those sites off immediately with new P L Cs. The second is programming as a result of trying to limit on peak power. So we're developing programming that will shut off the pumps immediately when we're at peak power demands. Uh, last year, our water management analyst, Brian Boggs, saved over a million dollars and trying to run the pumps off peak. Um, and this will allow it to be instantaneous and will continue to get additional optimization and save electrical cost savings. Um, and the third one is a request from Environmental Services, but it's for our O and M's benefit, I would say. And it is um that A Q M D has requirements now with it. To provide reporting of when generator runs uh and to distinguish between operation maintenance runtime and emergency. Uh, power runtime, um, and it the, it's mandated reporting that starts in January. So the gen- the programming for the generator runtime uh will help uh meet the requirements of that reporting. So in summary, um, the the request is two hundred seventy-three thousand nine hundred twenty for N D I programming. Three hundred twenty-five thousand seven hundred nine for N D I to provide twenty P L C panels. And three hundred seventy-seven thousand two hundred twenty-eight uh for I P S uh to provide thirty P L C panels. And with that, I'll open up to any questions.
So you're saving about five million on that initial ten million dollar estimate?
That's what I wanted you to get out of that, yes sir. I honestly, it, the the, the best part about it is we're building a new program, it's going to take us to the next generation. All of our staff in the electronic shop worked on these, so the the knowledge gained is tremendous. Um, we have taken a a monopoly through Cypar and developed an A V A system that's universal. And it's going to help us uh induce competition in the future, so, yeah, we're going to save a lot of costs over the next ten to twenty years with this implementation.
Great. Action.
I'd move approval.
Second.
Okay, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, pass three oh, thanks Dan. Bring communications. None, yeah, I didn't see. We have a one item for information, which is the year-end recap of the California Legislative Session.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board, Scott Barrett with the Department of Public Affairs and Customer Experience. Here with Cyrus Devers, um, our Sacramento lobbyist who's been doing a great job this past year representing us in Sacramento. You know, the governor had until September thirtieth to sign or make decisions on bills. Um, and so I just want to provide an update, you probably have information on all of these, there's a bill matrix in your packet. Um, but there were two bills that we sponsored this past year. Uh, the first one was A B thirty-one ninety-eight by Assembly Member Garcia, that was the J P A bill for electrical service in the Coachella Valley. That bill was passed and signed by the governor. S B ten sixty-five, as you know, was the Chromium six compliance bill that failed. It was pulled by the author before it made the, had the first committee hearing. So we attempted to get an author late in the legislative session, we weren't successful, we put together a coalition of. Twenty-four other water agencies and water organizations. Um, we didn't get an author to introduce that bill late in the session. But we are working on an Aqua legislative proposal, which is due this week. So we plan to submit that request and gain Aqua support for the compliance timeline. Either their sponsorship of legislation or at least support of legislation. And we're also working with the coalition that we put together over the summer. So we'll keep you posted on that, there's going to be a public notice going out and a board resolution that we'll be bringing back to the next meeting. Um, gaining your support for that that legislative proposal going to Aqua. Okay, um, so there were a number of bills that we supported related to Prop two eighteen, the Prop two eighteen process and rates. Uh, three bills, they all passed, um, which was good news. And we're busy preparing for the upcoming legislative session, um, we're putting together the. The Legislative and Policy Platform for twenty twenty-five and twenty-six, we'll be bringing that to the December meeting. And you'll be seeing that to provide input previously before that. We also have a federal affairs contract that we'll be bringing in December, our current contract with B B and K expires. And um, so we did go out to bid on that contract. And Cyrus is here um to answer any questions or provide any insight on what's going on in Sacramento right now, they're on recess, but. If you have any questions, then I welcome your questions, comments.
Thanks Scott.
Just wanted to say looking forward to the. That was kind of last minute last year for some reasons and uh. You you and Cyrus. Happy to hear you're working with Aqua to do that and um. Yeah.
We'll keep working it. Okay.
Yeah, I think overall, we had a very successful year, I know there was quite a bit of disappointment of a, over the. Governor's veto of Caballeros, uh, three six six. But I think uh we were, at least the ones that we highlighted, we were able to get through, so I very much appreciate the efforts on you and your staff and Cyrus. Uh, at least at the state level, I don't track the federal stuff as closely, but I think we also have a good advocacy team there as well.
Right, absolutely. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, thanks. Next. So this gets us to Board General comments, Director Nelson.
Uh, no, no comments, this one, thanks.
I'm happy to see that you're bringing this back. I don't think we had one last year, if I remember correctly. Right, um, oh, I don't, I don't remember, but. But these are, these are fun, I think they they mean a lot to the employees and um. I'm looking forward to seeing uh staff there, thank you.
Yeah.
More casual.
Good. I don't have any comments. Let's see here, we're, do we have any board requests for future agenda items? Hearing none, onto the meetings, we had the September twenty-fifth Golf and Water Task Force, I was there. Kind of. Just people getting some funding for uh. Turf removal. I think it's two dollars a square foot, yeah. And that seems to be getting some some uh uptake, that's good. They kind of got really messed up on the weather this year. They're overseeding time, which would have kind of started right around the twenty-fifth of September, it just was so hot. That um, it's going to make for some interesting. Seed stands out on these golf courses this year. Not ideal, let's put it that way. Um, let's see, September twenty-fifth through twenty-seventh Colorado River Symposium, uh, Director Nelson?
Yeah, that was in New Mexico and um, it was a good conference, you know, um. Uh, all the states were well represented, um, it was, had some interesting sidebar conversations with Andy Mueller and some of the other agencies that are. Looking to, in Colorado, to um, purchase a not- a hundred thousand acre foot of non-consumptive water right use. Uh, from a um. Defunct uh hydroelectric plant, and so that that was kind of interesting conversation in terms of whether they should. Buy the right or whether they should put some sort of fish flow requirement uh in the river to um. To utilize water that would then flow down to Lake Powell, so uh, kind of interesting conversations there um about the issues there. Had a good discussion with Tom Gibson, thanks Robert, um, for that, um, and he's the assistant uh. Uh, Director of um California Department of Water Resources, so he's uh. That kind of involved with Colorado ri- river issues uh from looking at it from a state perspective, uh, that was good, and then. Uh, there there was a seven panel, uh, seven principles panel, uh. And um, the Wyoming uh Director Brandon um had just learned that Pat Terrell was uh, who has been a long time. Uh, water buffalo from Wyoming and the principal for Wyoming had gone into hospice care. Uh, for some issues and so he was uh, gave a tribute to uh Pat as well as all the other principals did as well, so that kind of took a. Fair amount of that conversation, but um. Um, that was good, and, but the panel did get into uh. Uh, you know, what are we doing on the twenty twenty-six guidelines, and I thought that there was um. Uh, a a good amount of pressure on the Upper Basin to show their work in terms of. Um, what they're going to do past the uh Lower Basin's one point five million acre feet, and so I thought there was good pressure there. I thought that uh Carly Jurna, who's the attorney working on um, uh, a lot of these issues provided a. A good explanation of what the, how the Lower Basin's uh proposal, the Upper Basin's proposal. The Gila River um Indians proposal, and then what reclamation is doing, kind of. Those four alternatives, I I should put in quotes, uh, of uh what reclamation is working on modeling. In terms of the uh proposed plan, so. Um, Carly did a great job with that, uh, Robert, I don't know if we can get ahold of that deck, but the deck might be helpful. Uh, at some point to show everyone else, I I thought it was a good presentation, so, but that's about it for that, thanks.
It was listed as September thirty, Auto Cali Anthony Principles Meeting, which we had, uh, and um.
Made a little progress and we're, got a couple more meetings on this calendar. Do we have any other meetings to report on?
I had one, Mr. Powell, um, October first, there was a section five contractor call, um, kind of follow-up to um. The um. The conference and um kind of charting the course on moving forward through the process. That was it.
Anything else? I don't think I had anything else. I've already looked, um, is there a motion to approve per D M for the meetings reported on?
Second, I'll say.
Motion.
Motion second, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, passed. General Manager Report.
I have nothing uh this time, although it is that time of year, sir, when I need to take a look at my goals and then uh sit down and uh. Have a discussion about an evaluation, so we'll schedule that first round for our next meeting.
Oh, I look forward to that.
That's all, sir.
Counsel Report.
Long meeting, so I will pass, Mr. President.
Okay. Do we have any departmental reports? Kerry's getting up, oh, yes, come on up Kerry.
I just, good morning, I just wanted to do an introduction, um, this is Robert Schull or Rob. Um, he's the new Engineering Services Manager, um, he just started yesterday. So he'll be overseeing our Development Services Right-Away Survey and Inspection Group, so I just wanted to introduce.
Good.
You say you have a face to a name.
Great, nice to.
Yeah, Rob, welcome, Rob.
Rob, where are you coming from?
Um, yep. Good morning there, um, yeah, President Powell, members of the board, yes, I'm coming actually from San Diego County, uh. Uh, previously worked with the Vista Irrigation District. Uh, worked there for about four years, uh, then worked for uh Visidas Water District for about fifteen years before that. And then Otai Water District before that and Ramona, so. Uh, few, few different water districts there in San Diego County.
Good, well, welcome.
Welcome.
Yeah, pleasure to be here, thank you.
Good to have you.
And you know, all, can I do one as well?
Yeah, go ahead.
I have my new deputy clerk in the audience, she's over there typing away, Janet Martinez, she just started with this last week, and uh. Do you want to just introduce yourself real quick, Janet, sorry to put you on the spot, I have her taking minutes in. And introducing herself.
She needs to take minutes on on uh going up.
They made me do it.
I got a.
Good morning, everybody, my name's Janet and I'm happy to be here.
Good, yeah, nice to meet you.
And you are from?
I'm I'm a, I was a consultant and I was previously with Paul's Burgess Estates. Thank you, everybody.
Alright, good to have you.
But she did have, she has worked for various cities, she's just modest, she's worked for the ci- couple, City of Bell, City of Burbank, uh, most recent Paul's Burgess Estates, City of Santa Fe Springs. So she has worked for various municipalities.
Okay, sounds great. Good, well, at this time, the board recessed into closed session to consider the items. On the agenda, which include the additional item that we added, and we will reconvene to report out following closed session. Uh, the regular meeting is reconvened, uh, we do not have any reportable action from closed session. And with no further business, we are.
And I'm sorry, we did not go in closed session on the thorough item that was added.
That's true, yeah, the added item, we we um did not consider. And that we are, with no further business, we are adjourned.